Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, July 2nd, 8:00 AM in the Green Room. We'll begin with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? Yes, Paul?
Good morning. My name is Paul Givaud, 43 Long Beach Road. As the members of the council probably know, there was a resignation on the Board of Ed. Jason Adler tendered his resignation at the last Board of Ed meeting. So at our next DTC meeting, we unanimously endorsed Tom Dennehy to replace Jason. We sent an email to Mary with Tom's resume. I don't know if you'll have a chance to look at it. It's quite impressive. For over 30 years, Tom's been an advocate for kids, and he's -- it's an amazing resume if you get a chance to look at it. I know Tom and Erica met recently to kind of just go over expectations and responsibilities and commitment, subcommittees and all that stuff. So I know Tom is ready to really hit the ground running. I'm really proud of Tom. I think Tom would be a great add to the Board of Ed. He's -- he'll be an asset to the Board of Ed. He'd be a strong advocate for the kids in the district, and he'd be a great add for the town. So appreciate your consideration for Tom for Board of Ed to serve out Jason Adler's remaining two years, two-plus years. And while I'm here, I'd also like to mention as a proud member of the Henry Carter of all Board of Trustees, happy to see other Board of Trustees members here. We're anxious to get approved for the library project. We hope after the three workshops, you know, we're able to answer all your questions and make an informed decision. And we love our library. We're committed to working hard and making it the best library around, and we're really excited to get back to this project, which has been on hold for about three months. So appreciate your time for that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other visitors wish to speak? No? All right. So that takes us to the approval of minutes, June 18th, 2025. Is there a motion?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you. On to item number four, appointments. We have Thomas Vissino here this morning, and he would like to be appointed to the Board of Ethics for a term until 6/30/2026. Tom, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thank you for listening to me today, and Paul for appointing me. I haven't been involved in the last decade or so, but before that, I've been on many boards and commissions. I was on this board. I care about the town. I care about making good decisions for the taxpayers. I have a long history of volunteering in town. I think I could do a good job for the people at Clinton. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And a few years ago, I was sitting at the same seats here, and I was trying to do the same kind of work that you're doing now, and I think I'll make a good fit for this position.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. If you'll be sworn in at your convenience--
Excuse me?
--sworn in by Sharon, the town clerk.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day. Thank you.
The next person seeking an appointment is Tom Dennehy, who we've just heard about. He is -- would like to be appointed to Jason's seat, who has recently left, and that's for a term until November 2027. Tom, would you like to say anything?
Good morning, everybody. I'd be happy to serve on the Board of Education. I'm newer to town, but I'm not new to education. I'll be retiring next year, and I'd be happy to contribute, to continue to make strong commitments for students and staff members and so forth. We have a great town, and I'd like to help and support to make that happen. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, anybody? No? Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. The next set are reappointments, and as we all know, these people don't necessarily need to be here. May I go through all four, or shall I do them separately? Mary? Separately?
You can have one motion.
One motion? Okay. So we have Trish Vadas, who is seeking a reappointment for the Historic District Commission until 6/30/20. Jason Feeney, who I need to change -- he is down here as a G, but he's actually a D. He's a Democrat. I wanted to mention that just because it's different than what it reads. That's for the Water Pollution Control Commission until 6/30/2028. Chuck Hill, unaffiliated Public Works Commission for a term until 6/30/2029. And Enrique Sotomayor, unaffiliated Tree Committee for a term until 6/30/2027. If that's acceptable, to have them all on one motion, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have a guest with us, David Corris from Connecticut Municipal Development Authority, who has a presentation for us. Welcome, David.
Great, thank you very much. Here?
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Michelle, thank you for the invitation, and Chairwoman Allen and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to share with you what we're up to at the Municipal Development Authority and how we could potentially partner with Clinton to help you achieve your objectives. So we are a quasi-public authority. We're a creature of state legislation, excuse me, but we are not technically an agency of the state. So we were established by legislation in 2019, but we weren't funded, and we didn't commence operations until 2024. So you can look at our statutory reference back to 19. If you want to go into the detail there, it's 8-169HH, but we didn't start until about 10 months ago. And our statutory purpose is to help communities achieve their development objectives in their downtowns and/or near their train stations. And so we are a very flexible set of tools that can be mobilized to add capacity and resources to towns and cities, large and small. We have a $90 million capital authorization, which we can use to provide technical support, but also to invest directly into projects that fall within one or more of four categories. We can invest in transit-oriented development, so mixed-use commercial and/or residential development within a half a mile of a train or a bus rapid transit station. We can invest in housing. We can invest in building demolition or rehabilitation. And then we can invest in anything that falls under the broad categories of development or redevelopment. So it is an incredibly flexible funding source, and we expect that a bulk of our funds will be for infrastructure, where we support municipalities' direct investment through grants. But we can also provide low-interest loans and gap financing directly to development partners. The way that we work with the municipality is a multi-step process. It's a voluntary partnership, and so the first step is for the local legislative body to raise their hand and to opt in to work with us. And that's really first and foremost, just to give us some indication that there's enough local interest, so we can start to spend the time and energy. We can partner with dozens of municipalities. This allows us to prioritize with those that are willing and most interested. There's no commitment at that point. There's no obligation. It's merely just raising your hand and saying, "We want to start to work together." Once a town or city opts in, we then take a look at your zoning, but we only look at your zoning within a very localized geography. So it would be within the downtown, within a half a mile of the train station. And our statutory obligation is to certify whether or not your zoning will likely substantially increase the number of housing units. It's a bit subjective, admittedly, and I tell communities, forget about the word substantial. If you're allowing multifamily housing, if you have, you know, a large former industrial property immediately next to the station that's going to redevelop, you're going to check the substantial box. I focus a lot more on the word likely. We're going to help you make sure that your zoning is actually calibrated to deliver on your vision for your community, recognizing constraints. We understand wastewater treatment constraints. We understand traffic constraints. We understand historic district constraints. So it's going to be locally calibrated, but we want to make sure that there's nothing in your regulation that developers would look at and say, "Well, they say they want this, but their zoning does something different. We're not going to make that investment." It's very possible that we can check the box on your zoning right now. I haven't taken a close enough look at it to be able to say definitively one way or another, but we might look at it, and we might say, "You're there, done." Or we might have some recommendations. It's crucial to note that if we have recommendations for ways in which you can tweak your zoning to help better realize your vision that you've articulated for your community, it's up to you whether or not to take them, right? We don't usurp any local control. We can't force any regulatory change on you. We can't mandate that you do anything. If we have recommendations and you don't take them, then we don't move on to the subsequent steps in the process, but it remains wholly within local control whether or not you make those amendments. Once we've certified your zoning, either because it was already great as is, or because we've worked together on some modest tweaks, then we enter into an MOU with the chief-elected official to designate the boundaries of the development district. It's basically the line on the map. It can include anything that's in your downtown or within a half a mile of a train station. That also includes the zoning that we've certified. And that's an important distinction because it indicates, just because a property is within half a mile of the train station, it doesn't have to be within the development district. You can carve out single-family neighborhoods. You can carve out areas within the downtown that you're not looking to develop. It'll just be the portion of the downtown or the station area where you've zoned for appropriate growth. Once that line exists on the map, then we can entertain funding applications for any projects within those boundaries. And so once the MOU is adopted, once the boundary exists on the map, then the municipality can apply directly to us for infrastructure funds, or any developer operating within those boundaries can apply to us for gap financing. I often get the question around sort of the development and what the approval process is for that, so I'll make a couple points there. You know, first and foremost, a developer can apply directly to us without going through the town, just as they would be able to apply to a bank, but they still have to conform with your zoning, right? A developer can't apply to us to do something that's in conflict or not approved by your local regulations. We can only fund projects that have met your local regulatory requirements. The projects, you know, we don't have a set density requirement. We actually don't have an affordability requirement. We can fund any number of different development types that are, you know, what your plan calls for. The final points I'll make, and then open it up to any questions folks might have, you know, $90 million is a lot, but it's only going to go so far as we engage with communities throughout the state. So we're always thinking about ways to add additional value, and I think the big two that municipalities like to participate in are, one is helping with kind of marketing development sites and helping to matchmake communities with developers that have a proven track record in comparable, you know, contexts and with comparable projects, and then also helping with state permitting and the coordination of state investment. And so when we work with the municipality on one of these development districts, we will help navigate projects through the subsequent state permitting process, and also help help kind of coordinate different state investments from different agencies taking place within that limited geography. So as I said, we started about 10 months ago. Much of 2024 was focused on getting our operations up and running and everything that goes into setting up a new authority. And so we've been signing up municipalities since February of this year. That was basically the earliest that you could conceivably come in. We have 17, maybe 18 as of last night. I haven't actually had a chance to check in with them yet this morning, but 17 or 18 municipalities have opted in. They're all different sizes, from every different corner of the state. There's about a dozen that are in the process of doing so. None have yet moved on to the MOU phase. We're in the heart of doing that work right now, but we expect that we'll be at our first MOUs later this summer, and we'll start investing in projects later this fall. So if it is something that's of interest to Clinton, and I think could be a really good fit for what you're trying to achieve near the station in downtown, then I would just encourage you to move as quickly as is practical, so that we can get you in the queue and start identifying funding to help you achieve your goals. That, happy to answer any questions folks have.
Anyone?
That was pretty comprehensive. I had lists of questions. You hit them all. One needed, and those are the towns that you recognize, 17 are already in it. How many on the shoreline? Any of our neighbors?
Yeah, so the only shoreline town that has formally opted in is Old Saybrook, and we are in conversations with Guilford. They've kind of, like you, taken some of the first public steps, and in conversations with Branford and with Westbrook and with Waterford, if you consider that shoreline. I don't know if you stop at the river or not, but quite a few communities.
Now, you said private developers can apply directly. Have you had that yet?
Yeah, so we have been in conversations with, you know, probably a dozen or so. None have formally applied because they can't do so until the community within which their project exists has an MOU with us. But there are quite a few projects that are sort of engaging with us in the anticipation of -- and they run the gamut from new construction to office-to-residential conversion, from, you know, higher-density apartments down to low and medium-density, kind of missing-middle multifamily.
Is there a timeframe that CMDA is expected to exist, the $90 million?
Yeah, so the $90 million authorization doesn't expire, but that's our authorization through June 30th, 2027, with the expectation that in the legislative session in the spring of '27, we would receive further authorization for '28 and '29. And we'll also, you know, slowly get some of those loan proceeds back, so a portion of that $90 million becomes a revolving fund.
So if we were to opt in now, what's the timeline of getting an MOU and then actually starting to work on projects?
Yeah, I think realistically, you know, if you were to opt in now, we would be at an MOU by year's end, and we could start, you know, certainly talking about projects this year and potentially allocate funds, you know, second quarter next year. And the process is pretty simple, right? You apply to us. We vet it on staff. We do that within -- we have a statutory commitment to do that at the most, within 90 days. Goes to our board for approval, goes to State Bond Commission for approval. And so we'll be clustering project asks before the bond commission, you know, every three months or so.
Thanks.
I've got a question. So I like the idea of, you know, lining everything up to allow developers to come in and go directly to you, but I really like the idea of municipalities, i.e. us, being able to come to you directly. Can you give me some examples? I'm sure you're talking to other municipalities. Maybe it's not formally applied for, but what projects are municipalities similar to us doing with these funds?
Yeah, great question. So the important thing, first and foremost, is that there be a nexus between the infrastructure and the development potential, right? So it has to be something that is designed to enable a site or sites that you've zoned for development, but otherwise can't achieve it. And so in a lot of communities, not surprisingly, it's around wastewater treatment, right? And even if there is a sewer treatment plant, sometimes it's a sewer line extension or an inflow or infiltration study to mine capacity out of the existing system. Some of them have to do with transportation, like a pedestrian bridge to get across the tracks or to get across a creek or an intersection reconfiguration. Sometimes it has to do with remediation or demolition for municipally-owned property to prep the site. And what I tell communities, right, the two most important things, first is the nexus between the infrastructure and the ultimate development potential. But I also tell folks, you know, there's a lot of state different programs. So take remediation, for example, right? Folks ask me all the time, "Can our funds be used for brownfield remediation?" Absolutely. But first, I'm going to go with you to DECD, where I used to be deputy commissioner, and help them understand the value of that remediation within this development district that we're working together on, and advocate on your behalf for state funding. But if the timing isn't right, or that program's fully exhausted, then absolutely, we would step in. So it's going to be a combination of helping identify the critical infrastructure gaps that will unlock the development potential that you've identified, lobbying or advocating with you to state agencies if existing programs exist, and if those programs are exhausted or an appropriate program doesn't exist, then allocating our funds to that purpose.
You mentioned commitment, and that at this point, there would be no commitment. At what point would there be commitment, and what is that commitment?
Yeah, so the short answer is maybe and to be determined, right? It's tailored on a community-by-community basis. The step at which that would happen is the MOU stage, and, you know, some communities, there will be no substantive local commitment. Others, it might be around -- in some communities, the development economics are such that a tax agreement is necessary to facilitate development without us putting in an astronomical subsidy. So in some communities, it might be a negotiation around the tax rate for future development. In other communities, it might just be a cost-share agreement that if we invest in infrastructure, it's going to be an 80/20 match. In other communities, it might not be anything. There's going to be some local skin in the game, right? There's going to be something that demonstrates a local commitment, but it's going to vary on a community based on your abilities and what's right. So it's a long way of saying, it comes in the MOU phase, and it's not going to be something like, we're here to help you realize your objectives. And so we're not going to put up artificial hurdles to that process. We're not for profit. Obviously, we don't need to make money in this effort, but we do need to be sustainable. So finding a relationship that makes sense, that enables us to invest while identifying the appropriate local skin is what gets tailored through the MOU negotiation.
And who in town do you work with on the MOU?
Yeah, so here it would be with the town manager's office, and it depends, based on local charter or your own kind of process, whether, excuse me, whether or not that's something that they're -- the chief, it's with the chief-electe. Whether or not the chief-electe is empowered to take those steps, or whether or not it's something that comes back to the council, that's in your, you know, purview. And we don't have a stake in that. We do whatever the local process is.
And just one more question. There is no density requirement.
Correct. Yeah, there's no set density requirement, right? So we may look at the zoning, and we may say, you know, "Listen, you've said you want apartments in this area that's going to reinforce local businesses on the main street, and you're allowing X, and X would require an astronomical subsidy, you know, 1.25X will work better in the market." We may make a density recommendation based on our quantitative and objective analysis of the development economics, but that's not a set number. It will be a number that's tailored to you and your local conditions.
When those recommendations come back, is that a conversation with us, or is that a, this is?
No, 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 absolutely. Yeah, I mean, you know, the example I sometimes give, like, you know, maybe we have four recommendations, and we negotiate, and you agree to do two and a half of them. Yeah, it's not a hard and fast. And we also recognize, you know, I plan on doing this for a long time. You know, this authority will be in place for a long time. This is going to be a longstanding relationship, right? We're not trying to set the parameters on day one that are going to be in place for 10 years. It's going to evolve over time. And the boundaries can evolve over time, right? There's no prohibition on developing a district today that is extended at some point in the future or is tweaked, you know, every year, whatever is right for the local conditions.
Yep, sure.
What I hear from you is, this is predominantly for housing projects and things of that nature?
Yeah.
I didn't hear much about commercial or business.
Yeah, so the short answer is both. The longer answer is our statutory purpose is first and foremost economic and transit-oriented development, and secondarily, housing. That said, housing is a critical objective of the state this day, so housing will need to be a component of our early projects, but we absolutely are statutorily enabled to invest in commercial development that doesn't have a housing component.
My second question is, have you gone down and seen the half-mile area around our railroad station?
Yep.
It's a postage stamp. There's not much you can do one way or the other.
Yep.
So I mean, basically, I guess I'm coming off very negative, is, I mean, we got so many people looking into that little half-mile there around that railroad station. It's astronomical here that, you know, we just had a presentation here about a month ago from our own redevelopment and land use, or where was it, Conservation Commission and everything. And I just, you know, I just get skeptical about how many people are looking at, I don't know what we're going to build there. This is not Waterbury or New Haven. This is only a little town, 13,000 people.
Yep.
I mean, how much can we put in that little half-mile around that railroad station?
Yeah, certainly not nearly as much as those bigger communities that you mentioned. You know, listen, you're constrained by geography. You're constrained by flood risk. You're constrained by lack of sewers. That all gets taken into consideration, and as I said, we don't have a set population number. We don't have a set density target, but you do have some parcels that would help build your grand list, that would help support local businesses, and we're a tool to help you achieve your objectives on those limited number of parcels.
And they also can provide funding support for developers. So anyone within that area who's looking to develop but needs additional funding or is struggling right now with some funding, they can apply for that. Also wastewater treatment--
Correct.
--could help offset some of that, which is something that the town is working on for the downtown area and trying to find a source for income for that. So this would be an avenue to explore.
So you're saying our proposed plans for wastewater would be eligible for some of this?
Could, it could be.
For the downtown--
I don't want to hear the word could be. Everything's could, could, this, that.
We can't admit to it.
Tainted or candid? I mean, because, you know, you get into these things, and then you find, oh, no, you weren't eligible. You weren't this and this and that, and, you know, there's all pie in the sky in the beginning, and then when it comes down to the fine print, it's, well, this don't meet this, this don't meet that, you know? I just don't want to get boxed in.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're not committing to anything, so there's no downside of--
Well, you did use the word commitment a couple of times later in the--
Yeah, you're not committing to anything by taking the first-- Yeah, you're not committing to anything by taking the first step.
First step.
Yep, yep. But yeah, I mean, those would be eligible projects, but I can't say today whether or not, depending on the project, depending on its scope, depending on what it unlocks, I can't say whether or not we would fund it, but it would be eligible.
And the town doesn't have any financial commitment to it. So it's, we can't explore any potential projects or have those conversations or have our zoning reviewed to see if it can support projects that align with their mission until we take that initial step to start the conversation.
So that's what I was going to ask. Essentially, step one is a letter of intent to kind of, for you to look at our zoning and for you to look at the projects and to walk through downtown, walk through all these areas and look at what capital projects were potentially funding and see which one of those would be eligible, what funding sources prior to any commitment with an MOU or anybody. So essentially, a letter of intent just to look into it, potentially, there's no financial obligation in coming down to an MOU if we get to a step two, really looking at what financial impact would be. But step one is essentially just a...
Resolution, right.
Correct. Step one is raising your hand to say, we're serious enough about this that we can start spending the time and energy to roll up our sleeves to see whether or not there is a subsequent step.
So the follow-up to that is the 90 million in capital projects. How do you envision that being, you know, spent down or requested by municipalities, requested by cities to be used, like type of infrastructure, type of projects? Has anybody drawn down on that capital money yet?
No, so no one has gotten to an MOU yet. I mean, the first opt-in was just a few months ago. So we expect the first MOUs later this summer and the first projects later this year. You know, we expect each project is going to be in the 1 to 10 million range. It's going to be first come, first served. Some of the communities that we're working in have development projects that are ready for gap financing. Some have an infrastructure need, some have a conceptual and strategic planning need. And so they won't get to project funding for, you know, 12, 18, 24 months. And so the funds will be spread in a way, we expect probably the majority of our funds will be loans to developers, you know, 60%, just to kind of throw out a number, 60/40 kind of developer loans versus infrastructure. But it remains to be seen based on what the demand is. The communities that have the zoning in place and will get to the MOU fastest, their need is gap financing for developments that would be happening but for interest rates, construction costs, et cetera. But the short answer is kind of, you know, let's check back in in a few months and I can give you a little bit more definitive about project size and where things are shaping up. We do expect that the 90 million will last, you know, for the next two fiscal years, under the expectation that we have 20 to 30 communities in and some of them move to projects while others are working with us on their broader strategy.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, David, could you tell us exactly what you want from us today?
Yeah, so, you know, the next step is if you so choose to call a public hearing prior to the adoption of the resolution. And so for the municipalities who invite me in at this stage, the next step would be for you all to call a public hearing that would cover the resolution and then to take action on that. And that would allow us to start working together.
Okay.
And would you be present at the public hearing?
If you want me to be, yeah.
I would think yes.
Yeah, sure. It varies community by community. Yeah, some say send us the template resolution and then they call me back in 60 days and say, we opted in. Others, I'm here for the introductory presentation, I'll be here for the public hearing, I'll be here when the council ultimately takes it up. I'm happy to be here for every step in the process.
All right. So we are looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing for August 7th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
August 7.
Yes, I will send you an email.
It's 6:30 PM.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number six, the library project, the conceptual approval. As Paul noted, Mary Beth has been here...
Three times.
Three times. And so would anyone like to speak at this point? I mean, Mary Beth, I know you've had a lot to say and we've heard you. Thank you. Does anybody have any comment?
I just think the point of it, just so everyone's clear, is not, it's for the library to move forward in any way, shape or form, fundraising, seeking grants, they need to have this as a town approved project. So the town is not committing any money to it at this moment or they're just acknowledging that this project needs to move forward, putting their stamp of approval on the project itself, no dollar amount associated with it. So it gives them the ability to go and find funding, which will then hopefully help the conversation when it comes back to the council as for town's contribution, how much they can get from outside sources. So that's the purpose of this process.
So moved.
All right, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks for your patience. All right. Item number seven involves a homeland security grant authorization resolution and authorizing resolution. And I believe we had this in our packet. Did everyone take a look at it? Michelle, do you want to speak to that? Does anybody want to speak to it?
Actually, this is the annual one. We've done it every year. Mike, I know, is part of this, I think he's the vice chair. Yeah, so if there's any specific questions, but this is the, it funds things like Bomb Squad, all towns, the towns in Region 2 are part of it. And it's an annual, it's an annual authorization that you sign each year. So any specific questions, I'm sure I will try, but I think Mike would might answer it better.
Okay, so we'll make a motion. Okay. All right, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number eight, the review of the draft changes to the Code of Ethics.
So we had a subcommittee a while back. It's been very busy, so it's kind of not made the agenda for a little bit. But we had a subcommittee, we worked with attorney DiNoprio on updating the Code of Ethics there. And you have the marked up version that was sent out to you and in front of you this evening, or sorry, this morning. Simple things, you know, changing Board of Selectmen to Town Council, Town Manager's Office. There were some suggestions to make some areas a little more broad and some areas a little more tightened up. So they were provided, it was provided to you to review. Since it's an ordinance, it would, you would be making a motion to move it to a town, a public hearing. And then the process would move forward where all the boards and commissions would then review the new Code of Ethics, sign off on it. It would be an annual review, which had not been being done. And it would also include the employees, which had been cited in the original Code of Ethics, but the employees had never received it. So this is not just going to be okay and then we move forward. There is a process that's going to take place to make sure that everyone's aligned and aware of what's in the Code of Ethics and that is followed. So that is in a nutshell. And Dennis and Mike were on the subcommittee.
In the immediate family section, you struck the in-laws. Is there a rationale?
Is that right?
On the immediate family section, there's a line through daughter-in-law, son-in-law, father-in-law, mother-in-law?
Yeah, what's with the in-laws?
They just thought it was too big. I mean, too much.
The attorney basically said, you know, based on past experiences and all of the other municipalities and cities that, hey, this is what they've seen effective for language and there's reasons that they pulled it out. So, you know, it came recommended from the attorney, so it's okay.
Yep, it seemed in line with other ones. I just wanted to know the rationale.
Yep.
Any other questions? We'll make a motion and then we can talk about it if there are any other questions. A motion to approve the draft ordinance is presented and sent to public hearing on August 7th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, the town manager's report.
Okay, okay. Good morning, everyone. Couple of things. We had a retirement of the inland wetlands clerk in building. We, she put it in about a week's notice, I couldn't, I didn't know this at our last meeting. So she retired on the last Friday. She is staying on Thursdays to finish up some projects that are in the pipeline and she'll remain there on Thursdays until the position is filled, just to help fill that gap, which we greatly appreciate. The former building department clerk took the position over in Public Works that was vacant due to retirement. So the WPCC part-time individual has taken that full-time position. So now we have a, the WPCC clerk, that's a part-time position vacant again. So that job has been posted. So there's a lot of internal moving, but I'm confident that we will get these positions filled and keep everything moving seamlessly in the transition period. The CI Prey for Pearson has been completed as of 6:26 and was filed with the clerk's office, so the restriction has been lifted. So that is great news. And that was sent off to the developers. We received a letter on the second that the replacement bridge, Ben Merrill Bridge over unnamed Brook will be starting. There will be a virtual public hearing presented by the Connecticut DOT on July 17th at 7:00 PM. Like I said, we were just notified of that, so we will make sure that it is properly posted to let the residents know that that will be coming up. We are also, one of the things that we initiated early on when I started, which took time, was to move us to a .gov. Right now, we're a .org, which is a very unsecure email. And through, we applied for the U.S. Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agent for eligibility to move forward. And we are going to prove, so we are working on getting that transition done. I will keep you up on the process as we get there. But this is very beneficial, especially for our police department, because currently they can't receive emails from certain agencies because it's a .org and the .gov is a much more secure and approved email. So that is moving forward. MIRA, many of you know, I've given updates along the way, that they've dissolved. So for our waste, the Essex transfer station is going to become privately owned. So we will continue bringing our waste there. The cost will be 140 a ton. We budgeted 145 a ton because I knew this was happening, so we are well within that. The only slight change is that prior to this, through MIRA, we were not paying for recycling. So there will be a recycling cost at some point. Right now, there were funds that were, MIRA had for recycling. They are going to credit it to the transfer station. And as it gets spent down, once it is depleted, then the town will potentially have a per-ton rate. They don't know what that is, they don't know how long that funding will last. But, so right now, there is still zero cost for recycling, but due to the extra money in our budgeted lined item, I feel that we should be in a good place. But I will, if there, a budgeting issue comes up as we deplete that, I will let you know. And so that went in effect in July 1.
Do we negotiate that rate with the private entity, that $140 per ton?
No, it's a group. So it was us, Essex, Old Sabre, the whole group of, I think, nine communities that were part of MIRA that use Essex. It was a collaborative effort. It was like, you know, you get a bulk deal, I guess. So there was not any private negotiations and it's for two-year contract. Then we did a, the beach park road closure and bridge update. We, the road will be closed starting on July 7th. There has been updated information on our town website, a frequently asked questions that was posted and shared also to the associations and individuals that have expressed concern through the police department, through their police commission meetings and individuals who've reached out to my office. The chief and I also did a PSA video on, earlier this week, and we have almost, we have over 11,000 views. So the video concept worked, which is great, so we may do more of them. But I think it was important, it was shared well over like 50 times too. It was encouraged to be shared to help the information get out there. So, and we haven't really received any more people reaching out to my office with questions. So they've gotten their questions answered. So that is my town manager report for an economic development update. Alan Felgate has been hired and started on the 16th. So he is working primarily on getting out and meeting businesses, introducing himself and establishing those relationships. He is working with Dale Croup on some training and the needs of Clinton and also seeking out some additional training in general for the economic development role through CCM as a resource. And he will be running, well, not running, he will be doing his first report officially at the Tuesday EDC meeting next week. The library lease, we are in the final stages of negotiating that. Our attorneys reviewed it. I spoke to the landlord yesterday and sent off the marked up copy, so we should hopefully have that finalized today. But Mary Beth and her team and the help of Public Works have been working in that space and they are really making great efforts. And we have a very confident opening date of the 15th. So I will obviously send you all an email and let you know when it's official. And it's very exciting, there's a lot of public buzz about it. And the banner went up and it's nice when you come under the bridge and you see the two new, the Cathay Nola, which is what is going to be opening in the back, and then the Library Henry on Main. The T-Mobile grant was submitted. So what we ended up putting in for were art-inspired bike racks and we gave it the theme Art Cycle. So they're very cool. So we submitted that on the 30th or last Friday, I believe it was, 27th. And we should hopefully hear about if we're recipients of that at the end of August. And also the trolley, you've probably noticed there are some new trolley signs, lawn signs throughout the main street area. We got a report yesterday from the River Valley and the ridership has increased, over the weekend, we had, just one day alone, over 60 people riding it, which is more than they had almost all last season. So the signage is working, the promotion is working. We're going to continue to push that and that will hopefully help connect our visitors and residents to our businesses. So it's very exciting. And that is all I have.
Could you give us an update on the town beach, like with the bathhouse and the...
Yeah, so I actually had a tour of the beach. I did a walking tour with Beau on Tuesday. No, today is Wednesday, Monday, sorry. And it's good, I mean, we're in good shape. There's been some delay with the basketball court mainly because of the contractor. So that's slightly delayed, but he's hoping in the next couple of weeks it gets all finished up. The bathhouse came out beautiful, so we are working on getting an additional camera put in for that end, because there is no camera for that end of the beach to, in case there's any vandalism or anything like that. We will have security down there. There will be some increase of flowers and plantings, landscaping, some cleaning up. But overall, it's running very smoothly.
What about, so money-wise, you know, we, they, we got the grant, right? And that was 250,000?
Yes.
So is that what's the money, is that the money they're using for the bathhouse and for the cleanup and for the...
They used, I believe, some of it for the bathhouse. They, the Parks and Rec Commission has developed a list of eight priorities and projects that they have, that they're going to be using the funding for. They also are working with Abby to come up with an erosion plan and some of that funding will go towards that as well.
So they still have...
No, they still have plenty of money to use, yes. But they have it all planned out as to what they want to use it for. I'm happy to, I can either have Beau come and give you an update specifically on certain projects or I can get the list and share it with you as well, if that's something the council would like.
Yeah.
Okay. But overall, the energy down there is great and it was nice to be down there and see his staff. I met with some of his staff members as well and they're really a great team.
Any questions? No? All right. Chairman report. I wanted to thank Mary and Michelle for everything that's going out on social media, including the videos. the video that I saw the other day, all the updates. I think the community must appreciate it. I've gotten a lot of good feedback from the tax letter that was sent out. I've heard from a lot of people, and so that was a good move. I wanted to thank the chief for coming last time for the meeting, for the, the information about the possible use of cameras for future police funding. And I read about it since, last night it was on the local news, the communities that are starting to use this. There are both the speeding cameras, which I don't know much about, and then the red light camera that you're talking about. And I would like very much if you could, if your schedule permits it, at the next meeting to come and talk to us about the use of the cameras. I understand we don't have them yet. What would be the process of bringing them in, installing, and, and other AI moves towards policing?
Sure, we can have it do that. We actually have a self-ready presentation, we're ready to go, and we can bring in the company that we would sign on with. There's no obligation we can add to town, so we have no monetary responsibility to the company that we would, we would use, and there's, the state of Connecticut has very set rules as to implementation of these programs, so we've set that up. What would we require would be, as I mentioned to you before, the town council would have to adopt an ordinance allowing the use of these cameras. There would have to be a public hearing prior to that adoption. We have language that we've taken from both Middletown and Milford and other sources and kind of crafted it to here in Clinton. So we'd be certainly ready to go and make a full presentation to the council next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just to point out, you also already have the police commission's blessing on this.
The police commission has already approved this, so that's already, we've already gone through that. They're, they, they backed the idea for us in the public safety side. We see it as a win-win. We're either going to get voluntary compliance from the motorists, making the streets safer, or it's going to provide us with a funding source to put more officers out there to do actual enforcement. So we're going to get the end result, because the end result is simply voluntary compliance and ma, and make it a town safer. That's our mission, keeping Clinton safe.
All right, thank you very much for that. And that's it, council discussion? Yep.
Unfortunately, Mr. Prisante, I talked to Chairman of the Building Committee from Oregon, Mr. Vee, he talked with various people, and come to fact that that's normal practice, is that towards the end of a building project, the committee or at the time, we should say, at that time, the selectmen, intuses Vee, said we're going to get some money back, and so therefore doesn't proceed with spending another bond or short-term. So I stand corrected. As Mr. Vee says, we're both very disappointed, as you are. That money will come back to the town, but it will pay off. There's a $1 million still bill to be owed. So, as Mr., he's here. Bob, I stand corrected. Thank you for bringing to my point, attention though, so that I could investigate and find out, because there's a lot of us that thought, including the chairman, that we were going to get a, some money back for us to spend. But it was always the intent of the people that were creating the finances at that time, that that's how they would use that money. So thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
My second thing is just a little observation. You know, we approved a sidewalk project on the north side of Route 81 going west. I would hope, are we in contact with any of those people, the merchants? I'll tell you why. The other day, when I was driving here, I noticed that a merchant was turning up his sidewalk and paving and all that. So I went down, not over your head, but I just went and made an observation to Abby and said, Ab, has anybody talked to these, you know, did they know that we're eventually going to put sidewalks there? Oh, she said, I didn't notice. So she said she would take a ride down. But I think it's important that, I don't know what happened there, but I think we should be notifying those people that are invested that, you know, we've made a commitment, we're going to put a sidewalk there. You people are putting up new sidewalks or maybe barriers that's going to get in our way. Doesn't seem, you know...
I'll follow up with her, just to make sure if it falls on the DOT.
That's no problem, you know, I just thought, you know, that...
No, I thank you for that.
I don't know who's in charge of doing that type of thing, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Council liaison reports, any of those?
Not today.
No? All right. So I would like to make a motion to go into executive session at this point and invite Mary and Michelle and the chief to mail. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. So do we have a motion to approve the tentative police contract as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I think so.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all very much.